So good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this is like first part city council work session for Thursday, August eighth, twenty twenty four. To order this time, I'd like to your motion for adoption. So move.
Second.
Look the second discussion, all those favor say hi.
Hi.
Eight is guys have it. Thank you, everybody. This uh tonight are the only topic we have for the work session is revenue expenditure fiscal year end projections for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. By any. Laura.
So we have a presentation and uh just basically with some snippets of information that has already been presented back in March. So if you go walk to the next slide, so you can see right here projected any fund balance. And this was the information that you have already had provided to you as of March for the early estimate when we did the projected six year forecast. Because I figured that we would be he would be interested in that information walking into where we have. Where we are at further in the year with the projections going uh. Basically, point of July, August. So that is why you have you've got the information that's all together in March of twenty twenty four. We walk to the next slide. You will see that. You have the on the right column, you also have the projected what we define as operating. The operating, I'm just gonna quickly go over is when we discuss operating, all that means is taking. Removing the beginning fund and ending fund balances, you're taking your actual and estimated revenue. And you are subtracting your expenditures to see if. Your revenues are supporting what your expenditures are for the by any. So that's in that term will be used of quite a bit throughout the budget. So uh just walking through what that operating needs uh before we walk to the next slide. So now we're walking into the projected any fun balance as of August. And in the summary format, um there's a lot of moving parts when we get into this budget and. As far as the general funds, as far as the revenue side goes, we have more information in this. We have grants added in, we have, you know, we we know a little bit better of where we're trending on some of the the revenues that are are trends such as sales tasks. We have better information because we're further into the year and now we're projecting a smaller amount of the remainder of the year. Uh and then we have twenty twenty three's actuals, which we had in March, too. Uh that being said, we're projecting a smaller window of time, hopefully to be more accurate. That being said, uh the expenditures, too, there's a lot of moving parts. I'm just gonna say that in general because. When the numbers change, I just wanna be really clear. It's not normally one thing that is changing, especially in the job fund. Uh we had, I I don't even know how many people leave as far as staff goes, we hired new people in. We have what we call buyouts. There are so many moving parts. We have grants that have come in on the revenue side for uh Department of Commerce. And so there's just a lot of moving parts. Uh if you have very specific questions on that, I might have to circle back on to to you. I might not have that exact answer compared to March. But we can go back and look and we can circle back and if we need to do a little bit of a follow up on this information, we absolutely can do that. And so just walking through and that kind of that overview really stands for. Almost every fund that supports and uh any type of salaries, which is the general, the street. You're gonna have the transportation capital fund, the uh sewer utility fund, the surface water utility fund. Those are the funds. Uh that support salaries and benefits for moves. So as just to kind of call those out as some of the moving factors. Um. And then I'm just going to walk down each one. Is that?
Probably makes your pleasure.
With every, okay, so just just to give the overview of every single one, uh then more specifically going into the general fund. Again, we've got better information on construction uh revenues that are that are put in uh. To that that revenue source, we've got better information on traffic handling, you know, revenue. So there's some some driving factors we have, we added a passport uh clerk. So that then is going to drive some additional revenue on that side expenditures, too, but uh. On both sides. And so so those are some of the moving parts. Uh one of the big, one of another larger item that we addressed in the budget amendment. Uh we weren't accurately, we we had missed, I had missed our own that uh the police overtime reimbursement. So when we trued that up in the budget amendment, then that adds to the revenue side where we had. We had it included in the expenditure side, but it had been missed on on the revenue. So that's where we just have more information. It's a little bit more trued up as far as revenues and expenditures, just to give you some highlights on that. Um. And then, like I said, there's a lot of the moving parts as far as employees, we a lot of them, employees retired. Uh employees have come in and so there's some moving parts on salaries and benefits uh within that but. Um and then some expenditures that we have talked about uh all year long, being, you know, jail costs that have gone through the roof. Um the dispatch that he had to uh absorb from that change from being with Boffel and now going to Norcom. And some of those bigger expenditures that we had to uh be not the prosecutor, the defense contract that we had to uh. We had to amend and so that then the cost that increased. So things like that are within the general fund. Um walking down to the street fund, same thing, uh oh, and we were able to. Probably a highlight for the street fund is seasonals. I'll just say it parks, uh which is in the general fund facilities, street. And then also part of sewer and surface water seasonals. Uh we previously had a contract uh where we had had the department, the correctional department that used to assist us. Prior to the pandemic, uh that was then during the pandemic, that clearly went away because they were not able to put. Individuals in a band to get them out here to support. Uh that was a very low cost, so we no longer have that option, so we've had to absorb some of that. In seasonals and we've been able to do that uh being full disclosure uh what we projected versus the actual expenditure, what we ended up hiring them at. Uh two very different numbers of this place, so um and so we had to true up for some of that that actual cost. But in order to continue to operate, in order to continue to keep our parks, our streets and and help our our crews. And the other thing that I actually uh want to highlight is at the time of adoption of the budget, in addition. Of our contracts, this goes back to a twenty twenty three item, our contracts for uh like our guild and our uh. Our guild and our teensters wasn't approved at the time we adopted the budget. And so with that being stated, there were some uh numbers that didn't a hundred percent line up. And so there are some of those back to the labor, the benefits and salaries. Okay, so uh again, just walk continuing to walk down council contingency, uh that's just your uh interest. Um walking down a transportation benefit district, that is our uh T V D and we made some changes in that on the revenue side. And so and then that supports our overlays and street improvements. That is paid for out of our transportation capital uh budget stabilization. Again, that is just our uh generating interest. Strategic opportunity funds, um that is where we're paying for the lakefront property. Uh the ARBA funds at this point, there that they have been allocated and so everything is coming out of that. Uh capital improvement, uh again, that is where our real estate excise tax goes into and then. Uh we have some projects in there, the transportation capital, that is where the large projects such as. The uh roundabout, that's the main driver out of that one at this point. Um and that's where we pay for like our uh. What's it called? Not safe streets or our early action, our early action. We call it safe streets, but that's a that's an actual plan, so I wanna be careful saying that it's our early action uh to try to mitigate some traffic and studies, etc. Uh the capital facilities and that's where we do our our building and that is funded uh from our capital improvement. Sewer utility, I definitely, if actually we could, we can walk to the, it's the same information, just adding the operating at the next slide. Uh so if we go down to that, I actually wanna take a minute. I like this and I brought up the uh agreements. Because this is the the sewer utility, uh this fund, this type of fund should be leaning on itself. Uh it should be supporting itself and so the operating numbers, uh the fact that that is starting to uh be a little bit lower. That is, I'm just uh starting the conversation now of a conversation that will likely be coming. Down the road as part of a next step budget discussion. Uh and when King County, I'm just gonna take a minute there to say when King County raises their rates. I think their next projected rates are five point seven five for twenty five and twenty six is seven percent. Those are direct pass-throughs. Whatever their portion of the rate increases, we just pass that one hundred percent through. Uh for for their portion of the rate and then there's what we call the city portion of the sewer rate. Um and that is what we previously adopted when we adopted our budget back in twenty three and twenty four. I we adopted both of those at the same time with a three percent. Um and then after that is when the actual teensters agreement and some of those costs came in when those contracts were actually finalized. And we are seeing some of those numbers show up at this time, so.
Dr. Von since Administrator Hill is not here, I will be his proxy for a second. So what Director Von is saying is there's going to be a conversation that. We are required to basically have this revenue neutral when it comes to the facility side of things. And we're starting, we're starting to uh we're starting to get to a place where we're at any effects and so. A big conversation about because the increases cost that are being that we have just passed through to to our customers unfortunately from King County. Uh also the capital side, they consider that as well, so just.
So that was a thank you for stopping and I welcome, I welcome that. Uh so that when we discuss the rates, too, that's a great uh segue into. It's the sewer utility and then it's the sewer capital and it's the surface water utility and the surface water capital. When we define and when we discuss the sewer utility rate, we are also having a conversation about the first, the operations. But secondly, the capital portion. So uh when we talk about the rates and we behind the scenes have a little bit of a deeper discussion about. How we're going to maybe change that conversation about how to allocate simply for operations and then designate. Um instead of just using a dollar amount, maybe there's a percentage on how we drive the the capital side in order to allocate a specific amount. Uh or way to be more transparent to our residents about what they're paying for and how they're paying for it. And so that's been kind of a little bit of a behind the scenes discussion that we've been having uh. As far as supporting that, so.
It's plus for a second, colleagues, do you have any questions? Customer riddle, have any questions? I just wanna pitch them to the senior there.
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yes. And thanks for the summary. I'm just looking at the one, might I adjure, uh let's see. Yeah, it's the capital improvement, which in um I guess March was uh projecting operating of two point nine million. And in uh uh August, it's dropped to a deficit of seven hundred twenty five thousand. And I was thinking that's a very startling change, but that's because we've actually started building things.
Uh they have, do you wanna take that one, man?
I'd be happy to take that one. Yeah, that's uh actually part of that is such to a great session, so. Yeah. And I think um yeah, well, our responsibilities are to to, yeah, and so we can talk, we'll have more uh discussions about that. In the public section. Yeah, thank you for the question.
Walking down into having this kind of the, I I paved the way a little bit in the sewer utility conversation of the rates and the capital. Uh definitely the surface water utility, this is a fund that. Oh, back in March, when I think it was Councilman Coleman asked me if they're a fund, or was it, I can't remember who asked me.
Remember the question?
Is there, is there a fund that is concerning? And I'm like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and honestly, it's it's a, it's because we have been proactive. I I mean, I just wanna take a minute to say that that we have been proactive on our coalwork projects on L sixty and we were able to get that completed. And that did deplete the capital fund, uh surface water fund. Uh and so we had those discussions during that budget season. And that being said, the current vote we're in is kind of unforeseen projects that just keep popping up twenty eight, thirty fifth. Um they are a little out of our control, so it's. I don't have a perfect answer on that one. I'm just stating where the situation that this the city is in currently um. With those funds, I do wanna say in the operating surface water utility fund, our requirements for permitting cost wise has. Definitely increased. I think it was prior to um twenty twenty three. I don't even know if that the the operations portion within that fund as far as permits and whatnot. Was maybe at about a hundred thousand dollar and then in twenty twenty three, it was three hundred and ninety three thousand dollars, so the N P D E S and. Have to.
I can.
Pause on that for some reason.
You can have a sheet sheet on the wall.
Those those permit costs are a huge driver of that cost and it just an immediate change. We have been successful in communicating with Department of Ecology in order to secure some grants that have been. Slightly offsetting those those uh cost increases, but we're projecting for, I mean. For within that one line item in the service utility that in twenty twenty four, it's gonna be somewhere around four hundred and twenty six thousand. So those are, that's just one line item within that fund and uh it's just being driven by. Like permit and requirements, legal requirements uh that the city has to comply with.
If I interact, interjecting on my Administrator Hill cap for just a second.
Yes.
To Director Von's point, service water utility and service water capital, there have been increasing pressures on intended on those funds. Uh because of statutory requirements that we're going to have. It's another place where the escalation in costs are quite honestly staggering and we are going to. We have a bunch of things that are pressuring the funds and our expenditures insurance. There's the whole host of the. Surface water particularly, too. It's another place where we're going to have a little conversation about how to make sure that. We're being compliant and um and making sure that our revenues are matching our expenditures in that regard. And for grants, through a right, but it's it's a very, very big lift and in many cases. Of course, it's in very hard work, but at the same time, it's unfunded at the state level sometimes. So there's at the national level, it's completely unfunded, so. I should take it to their grants, but it's very challenging. So that's another conversation for revenue versus. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so on both the sewer and surface, both utility capital, is this the long awaited hit that we're gonna be taking of the dual which we've been hearing of for a very long time? Which is completely unrelated to that.
I can't quite hear.
Oh, sorry.
Vice chair, sorry.
Whether these uh costs involved sewer capital utility and the service water capital utility. Were due to the long awaited hit that we're gonna be taking because the wrong should be known.
They they are unrelated. Yeah, and so that's another, another uh cliff edge hanging over us.
That is my understanding. I I'm looking.
I agree with.
Okay. I was looking to Director Perrigo to confirm that understanding before I.
Do not let you.
Before we proceed. Uh so then walking down to uh the sewer bond reserve, again, that that item is just basically a release of interest. The Public Works Trust Fund repayment, uh that one is uh pretty straightforward as far as debt payments, revenue debt payment. Uh which is associated with the sewer and then the vehicle equipment and replacement fund. Uh that one is, we've been staying on with uh doing some vehicle replacements, the two uh Tahos. We are anticipating uh getting uh coming at five fifty for the Public Works Department uh this year. So those are some some things that you will see probably down the road uh in the city administrative. And they happen, actually occur this year. Um and then the I T uh equipment replacement fund, that was one that we newly created to kind of break it out from the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. It was all within five oh one. Um and really those those two pieces are very different. And um as we've had to increase and as we've gone to different, having different I I T infrastructure. That needed to be on its own replacement cycle and just as to be more transparent about the costs. Of of that it takes for computers, uh et cetera. Um that is really. Been, I think, more of a transparency just with the public and with our residents, with our council of the cost, the true cost of. I T. And so that concludes, I guess that took a little longer than I anticipated. That concludes my overview. And I'm just not definitely anticipating some questions.
That's where we're going for any question. Actually, you you answered the question I had at the beginning, so it's really more of a comment. Um looking at the numbers, I'm particularly concerned about the general fund and the surface water lots, just because they. Their revenue to expenditure projections are substantially negative relative to the current fund balance. And I know two years ago, we made some significant changes to utility rates, permitting fees and the like. And also we have our investments, which have been putting in about five percent interest and even with that, they're still substantially negative. So I I'm looking forward to discussions about what we can do to try to turn those two funds around.
Because we're, because we're leaving.
Do you wanna respond?
I I think the conversations that have been going on, I just wanna say the conversations uh that we've been having now for a couple of years of. Inflation costs and I I don't, this pertains to just every fund that that pays for consultants. Uh consultant costs have definitely increased, wages have definitely increased. Um and we're seeing it in uh. Pretty much across the board, every department as they're, as the numbers are coming in, the inflation numbers are starting to actually show up. Um I I think in a very broad term, it to just state a lot of your concerns. And I will just politely state that the revenues are not. Increasing or coming in at the rate in which that we are seeing expenditures go up. And this is unfortunately been an ongoing conversation since I have been in government, which is now over, I can't say it's over ten years.
Uh thank you for the presentation. I wanna touch on number five oh one, which is the vehicle and equipment replacement. So you're seeing a fund balance increase, so for the last one, I presume that's just because of the expenditure that means.
Uh there's a replacement schedule built in, so. The goal is to always be increasing. Uh that being said. I don't wanna quite go too far down this. Conversations right now um behind between city administrator hill. We're looking to find different ways to possibly update some of our fleet. I think that's more of a budget conversation. I wanna. Probably give you enough to say that there is, there's definitely some uh. Conversation around the vehicle and equipment, uh well, may be, let me stop there, vehicles and trying to update some of our fleets. Uh and ways to to go about that. So I think there will be more on that discussion.
For sure.
In September, yeah, once we figure out, uh because we're still trying to. Put the pieces of the twenty five, twenty six budget together at this point. And have conversations about how all of those pieces are going to fit together, but that is definitely on the list and of a topic.
Yeah, thank you, Johnny. Administrator Hill is working on a longer term vehicle replacement plan. That will be presented at the council here. There's some details that have to be sorted out and. Um we just have to make sure that revenue, revenue streams are committed or what the asks are for that long term commitment. What we don't wanna do is get a situation where we're overextending ourselves in the future, staying within the budget uh cycle, if you will. And so there's some various aspects of it that I know that Phil is going to be bringing to council. I don't know if it's gonna be part of the initial budget introduction or it'll be or it will be, you know, sort of.
It'll be, it's together.
It's a.
It's budget. It's just all part of budget and I'll just disclose that we're looking at possibly. Um I I mean, I don't think it'll be a secret, but looking at possibly doing like um. Inquiring some debt in order to update and purchase and looking at through the local, through the state's program. Uh they have a lower interest rate so that we can purchase some of these vehicles, get, you know, the city would be taking on some debt. And evaluating what that balance can look like within our budget and if that makes sense in order to update some of our fleet. Uh for the interest rate of which we were, it could be paid. So that's that's kind of behind the scenes. The conversation that's being had, I don't think it's, I mean, I'm being secretive and then I'm like, I'm not sure why I made.
No, it's totally transferred.
Because it's just, we're trying to, again, I don't wanna state something, we aren't doing it, we're requiring to find out how we would do it. Then and what level, what, how many cars for police now. All of those conversations, when we have conversations about vehicles and when we have conversations about like the I T. Don't forget that every single operating fund supports those funds, so their five oh ones are internal service funds. So when we have conversations about vehicles, equipment and uh I T, those funds are funded by the others. And I will just tell you historically, the number one place when when uh budgets get really tight. That tends to be a place where where finance and cities go is. Right, wrong, I there isn't an opinion here, I don't have an opinion, but a place that generally generally has the belt tightened. Is vehicles, equipment, fleet and I T. Uh and again, right, wrong. It's just what tends to happen and I've watched it, it, this is Lake Forest Park, it's not unique in that sense. It has, I've watched it happen at numerous other places that I've worked and hear it from my fellow colleagues.
We're, we have a judge free environment here, so you're. But that. But that is, that's very true, uh, in, in the past, the, in budget cycles where we had to tighten the belt. That the, the vehicle replacement fund has been one that's been sort of the, the go to place. And previously we didn't have the I T, uh, replacement fund broken out, which is excellent for transparency. Some people understand that we do have significant expenditures that needs there. And they're, they're very different from the, the vehicle replacement. Vice Chair, personally.
And this is probably a question for you, Ms. Mayor, sure, but, uh, I'm going to show you a little bit about the, uh, vehicle replacement. Are we continuing our location of the fleet, is that one of the criteria that's going into the report that the city administrator people tell us is the question?
I don't think it's been determined yet specifically the types of vehicles, uh, it's more about finding, figuring out what makes sense from a debt service standpoint. Taking advantage, uh, please interrupt, Mr. Perrigo or Director Vaughn on this one. Um, my understanding is trying to figure out what the debt service looks like in terms of taking advantage of existing opportunities. Uh, we're, we're fortunate that we're finding some additional places for, uh, for financing. Like Public Works, for the Public Works Trust Fund for some things, and then there's another, this other fund for the vehicle replacement, um, projects. We are woefully behind logic vehicle, uh, uh, vehicle replacements, um. There's, there's real concerns there and there's, it, it becomes sort of a pool there and once you get into certain places and you're spending. You know, twenty thousand dollars a year to keep a vehicle working.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, you know, uh, without getting into leads here, I think that there. This would have been an easier conversation probably last year, honestly, but as Director Vaughn has indicated. The inflationary pressures have really caught up with us, plus the, not only inflationary pressures, but, uh, other pressures through insurance and jail costs, or you name it. We have things that are, that are kind of very down on us and so. Being able to take advantage of these kinds of great programs is more difficult because we're trying to be tighter belt a little bit because of the increased cost.
I appreciate your answer, the reason I was asking the question is because often the state has these consequences exactly to push their agenda, which might include the electrification of.
Vice Chair for Tony, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you again, I'm so sorry.
I get maybe there, actually there, sorry about that, um, so what I said, I was asking, I was asking the mayor, my justification for asking the question was literally. Sure, the state has an agenda and, uh, and some of them may involve using a fund to encourage the electrification of fleets, which is why I was asking that question.
I, I don't believe it specifically to this, but I can't, I can't say that with a percent, but it's not, I don't believe this kind of program specifically to electrify the fleet. However, it, it is something that is top of mind for sure. And if there's an opportunity for economies of scale, that's one of the reasons why these kinds of programs make sense, because we're part of a giant pool of people that are, that are making these purchases. And funding through the system, so, um, it is absolutely top of mind and it's something that we really want to be, uh, prioritizing for in the future. Um, and so the question of whether the state's specifically prioritizing this kind of program to do that, I, I can't say with certainty on this.
As long as I can remember, I, it's called a local program through the state and I, I'm not, I'm not sure if they. If they have requirements behind the vehicles, just.
I know the PD has, uh, the chief partner has talked about replacing things with various places, uh, either high grade or low grade vehicles as we go, as we go through the process. Right now, we've got vehicles that are, and again, I'm getting into leads here, this is for, uh, a conversation in September, but the. We have vehicles that are a hundred plus thousand miles that are mission very, we need to be in a place where we're not having to send them to repair shop. Very regular basis to make sure the case is made. That, colleagues, are there other questions for Director Vaughn? Or I try to field them, it's like, you know, it's been scheduled, so.
We will do it together.
Yeah.
It's a very budget.
Yeah.
Together.
Well, I would just, I would just say, um, too, that we're very excited about having these conversations with you all in September with the community. And there's a lot of moving parts to getting the budget, uh, together, Director, Director Vaughn knows very well how that, uh, uh, how that goes and. Um, and we'll, we will have robust conversations about pressures. The asks from various departments and pressures on our funds. Um, and the asks from the departments and the asks from the city council or a caucus and the things that you've all brought up. In the, uh, I think that, I think those were trees and other, other meetings and so. Um, and we have several months to find some happy ground to make sure that we're all, um, safe. That's a riddle, any comments, thoughts, criticisms?
Uh, no, no, it's just, we need to get that mic fixed, um. I think the only thing that I, I wanted to bring up was, uh, we do have a yes, not applicable for meeting the minimum fund balance targets. Um, would be, I think, nice to know what those targets are, to see how close we're getting to them. Uh, as opposed, you know, just the simple yes. I think that's only applies to four funds.
Thank you. Um, colleagues, any other questions? Thank, well, thank you, Director Vaughn, for outstanding presentation, and again, this is, we're just getting rolling just to get there here. Uh, in the coming weeks and looking forward to really, um, robust and responsible conversations with the key. God, if there's nothing else today, we will move upstairs for a journey.